Jason Nickel.
Here.
Brandon Daiski. Jeff Rubin.
Here.
Jennifer Rossler.
Here.
Gabe Turner.
Here.
Larry Gradovich.
I'm here.
Dave Frantzel.
Here.
Dave Brophy's not here.
He was excused.
Okay, and Lori White, if we only do it quarterly now with her. Sarah Smith, here.
Alright, on the agenda, we got a couple things to add. Thirteen D, we'll call it. Jeff has the marijuana ordinance, first reading of it.
Yes, sir.
When they're planning his zoning, I have a, I got a site plan today for the school. So I'll be reviewing that, we'll talk about that, we'll put that seven B. Barb, you had one more thing. What was that?
Yeah, I just have the, all the ordinance, the...
Oh, yeah.
Obstructing, or, you know, standing in the roadway ordinance, that one.
Believe that's it. Anybody else have anything? I think that was it. Alright, well, I'll make you have a motion, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as... I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Brandon, seconded by Gabe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Communications, one we have, there's gonna be a meeting at Angelina's Eatery for the redevelopment program on December tenth. Is it timed seven?
Seven.
Seven PM, so anybody interested in that can go to that. That's the only thing I have at communications, so I guess we'll move on to Barb.
Okay, the November regular meeting minutes are in front of you in your packet. You know, if there are any corrections or additions.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve our November first meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the November first meeting minutes.
Aye, second.
Motion by Gabe, seconded by Jennifer to approve the November first meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, there's also the December third meeting minutes in front of you. The only thing that we will, once they're approved, Jason and I will sign them and give it to Larry so that he can go to the bank and get all the paperwork done for all the accounts.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve December third special meeting minutes.
With the motion to approve the December third special meeting minutes.
Nice, second for motion to approve the December third meeting.
Motion by Gabe, seconded by Jennifer to approve the December third special meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, um, the bills are also there. I don't think there was anything... Extremely... It's all basically our usual bills.
I'll entertain a motion to approve our bills due in December. Make a motion to take the bills.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Motion by Brandon, seconded by Gabe to approve November twenty eighteen bills due in December twenty eighteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, um, I had it published in the view, um, the obstructing the street sidewalk or alley ordinance that we had, um, so it was printed on, or the week of, uh, November eighth. And once it's approved, or once we sign it, we will send it over to Gene to put it on our website and also, and we'll have it in our book, um, so then it'll be all, all we go. And then, um, something came up this week, um, about us publishing our minutes in the paper. And, um, I talked to Mary Charles with Emma Mall, and she sent me, and I printed it off and highlighted it for everyone, but it specifically says that, you know, you have to print out, or you have to have your minutes posted fifteen days after a meeting, within fifteen days. And then, it can be either published in a newspaper, or it can be posted three places in the village and/or on our website. So, um, we now post, we post it outside here at the hall, we post it at the library, I post it at the post office, and we also put it on our website. So I told the gentleman that, um, we are within the law. He had an older version that did not have that last little bit in the paragraph, so he was under the impression that we should have been posting it in the paper. So I just cleared it up, and I wanted everybody to be aware of it also in case we should be questioned anymore on it, you know. And then I also put in your packet, there was a, um, a ten-year fiscal health for jurisdictions, um, up here on county, and you can look at it, visit your own user, um, I just received it tonight. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Hey, Larry.
Okay, I'm just gonna read off the handling balances as of November thirtieth. General fund, two hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and six cents. Water fund account, three hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen and sixty-two cents. Major street fund, two hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight point zero nine. Local street fund, two hundred thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and four cents. Village street fund, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five and fifty-nine cents. Library fund, hundred thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. And downtown development fund, twelve thousand, nineteen dollars and six cents. Which should probably, my thing would be put up in the general fund. But just, uh, it's not out there, if you guys want it separately.
I just want to point out that this is the first time in history that the library has gotten over a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. You guys are doing pretty good.
Yeah. Couple months from now, we won't be, but hey. Once payroll hits, it's on hold, well, but for now, I'll take it.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Alright. Yes, uh, planning and zoning, I did one permit for a shed this past month, uh, it's for Ozenowski's, the one that burned down there on Washington there, just as you're going out of town and you left, they're gonna rebuild one in the same spot. Not quite as big. Um, and then today, I think Brandon had a copy of it, but the school sent their site plan for what they're gonna do, so we'll have to review that. He said, I just, I just got it today, so like at three o'clock, two, three o'clock, I see it, so... If anybody here wants to see it, Brandon does have a copy of it, so...
Other than that, do you have any zoning meeting? Meeting that planning commission?
Yeah.
Is scheduled to meet the seventeenth?
December eighth.
Yeah, December, excuse me, yes, here at seven PM.
Okay.
As of right now, there's nothing on the agenda to...
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't got nothing, I haven't even looked at that, but that, according to our rules, I didn't, we don't have to do that, the planning commission, so, but I'll look at it closer.
And you said it was December seventeenth at seven?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I believe that is all, all I have for now. If not, um, our little property with the shed hasn't gone anywhere really, so... Uh, no, I've been at the lawyer's office about that, so, uh, I think his lawyer contacted our lawyer, so I left it. He said, he will talk to him, so I haven't, he hasn't ever, that was just last week, actually. I got no update on that one so far.
Just see how that plays out.
Yeah, I, I don't know, he just, he says, I'll let you know when I talk to him, so, I said, alrighty. Other than that, that's it, done. Parks and Rec.
I want to update on the DNR rec grant. Currently, we have the highest score as far as in their scoring system for issuing the grant, and we should know whether we get it or not end of the month. And that's all we got.
You got anything for us on intergovernmental state?
I'm not, right at the moment.
I just, only thing I'd add under that, I went to that election class in Saginaw.
Did you go?
Yeah, yep.
Are you good?
Yeah, I think it was the same one they put on here, same guys were there.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, no, it's informational stuff, I mean, it's, you had the people from the big cities at that one, but I think there was thirty-five people, and, uh, most of them were new, new people, so...
I did get an email today about at fifty-one, they were having a meeting in Diamondville? It's over by Lansing?
I don't know.
Diamonddale.
Yeah.
Um, so I thought, well, maybe I should go to this, you know, 'cause they listed a few, you know, five or six things they were gonna do, an hour and a half long, for a two-and-a-half hour trip there and a two-and-a-half hour trip back. And like, I've done the one online, and that's probably the same thing, that, you know...
No, I, I think a lot of this stuff, you talk to people from other villages, you could put together these like, like that? I think you could get thirty people from just here on San LAC and Tuscola County, 'cause everybody's got questions on it. Like at that meeting, it's...
Yeah.
That, that's one of the big things.
Well, because they're always so far away that, you know, for us little villages, we just can't get there.
Yeah, I mean, that one was, it was in Saginaw, their new building right downtown, and it started at, uh, five-thirty, and I got out of there at ten o'clock, so... So, I was, few questions from people, that's why I went on so long, but, no, it was, it was good to go to, you definitely learned some stuff, so... Alright, the public works department.
Hi, Mark York. Hi. So, the guys have just been cleaning up town, getting ready for winter. We swept some leaves in Parks, and Tom Allen was in Allen from the county, running a mini-vil to, uh, grant out the bombs in Main Street, and they're gonna bring it back and, another time, do some more. Put the Christmas lights, our lightning strike on our handlers in the well, house is open, it's fixed now. David, go get a electric, come in and put up some upgraded surge protectors to hopefully stop from frying them. Let's get on here. Trim some more trees along the sidewalks, got them getting snow equipment, ready for pushing snow, and they're gonna put down the belting back on that bridge, that'll be on the DPW for the snow villagers. Which I don't even know, we, haven't done anybody going across it in the last couple years.
They do, they tear it up, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They're perfect, they're awesome.
So, what do you have to do now?
We put a, maybe belting over, so the belting cases are...
Rubber mat.
Oh, okay.
Marked out some fire hydrants along Main Street, watching for fire trucks. That would also put the county trucks, so they know where they're at, they know who. Anything else?
No, we finally got some, yeah, we got some meters in burbs, and good job staying on Chris Johnson.
Yeah, Barb, I give Barb credit, she don't quit on that. She does not quit.
So, we still have one.
It's a shame, it's a shame you gotta do that.
I know.
You should have to...
Still got like twenty-two over, yeah. So they sent eighteen at one shipment? Yeah. Wow. On the second army number.
We're still wasting out some on the first.
On the first, so...
I mean, he took them off when he, when he, the first two weeks he started it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, he got that whole bunch off, and he's still, we got three in a box the other day.
And I sent Chris a, an email asking him, you know, what happened to the other eleven from the first shipment, and I have not received any response back yet. So, you know, I'll, I'll keep frustrating him.
I'll bring her...
Eleven is missing, eleven still? Out of the first one, yeah.
No, I remember like this, in total, what, thirty-some?
Yeah, in total, there's fifty-some, yeah. So, yeah, like you said, we're, we got the second batch, but the first batch, we're missing half or more, and that last batch, he hasn't even seen the army number.
It's, it's been a struggle. I mean, he did it for months and months, and finally, you know, he come and he says, can you just try? And it got nasty towards them.
And we're, I mean, we're kinda stuck, because they did this in two thousand and seven, did the whole town, well, right now, it costs us ninety bucks to fix them, and if we go buy a new one, it's probably two eighty?
Yeah.
Two hundred and eighty dollars, so we, we're getting upset with the guys who will switch, while we can't, two hundred and eighty bucks, go buy a brand-new one, and then...
You have to stay with the same company.
Well, yeah, we don't really wanna do that either, but we don't want two systems either, I mean, so I...
Did you ever talk to that dude from Census?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Tony, yeah. I just told him, we'll just keep in touch, but right now, like Jason says, I mean, he's willing to come to a meeting and just talk about how the new ones, they got no moving parts, they're on the outside of houses, the readers, you'd never get one in people's houses, but, but they cost, uh...
If they would give us some kind of deal, since we're...
Yeah, and that's...
Getting rid of competition.
Looking to later, you know, whatever.
We got four hundred of them?
Yeah, we got four hundred.
So four hundred times two hundred.
Well, the next, next reading's in January.
Forty-nine, yeah, thirty-two, yeah, next reading's in January, and, like you said, with this cold weather, I'm sure there's gonna be, I don't know.
We did, we, we tore three, tore one apart to see if we could put the battery in it, and we can't, and it's, it's just a little D battery, but they...
That's on the new one, but the, that was the old one. I was not lying, I found a company in Ohio, but I can't, I can't get them on the phone, and they're not pulling up anywhere, but they were selling replacement batteries for the ones that we have currently, they were going dead. What were they, like, five or ten bucks a piece?
Yeah.
And they, they were selling them, but I just, I can't get away on the phone, so I've been searching Amazon and Craigslist, trying to, no, eBay, trying to find, I just figured if we can buy the battery, I mean, ten bucks a battery's cheaper than overpaying for, for, uh...
Neptune.
Neptune.
Well, and it's just, it's just frustrating, because... They still, you know, they know these need to be replaced, but they'll drag their feet until you...
So the ones that come in, you know, we keep track, like two, three, I'm talking over a five-month span, so I don't know what he has on file.
Right.
Hope he doesn't try saying, well, we sent you all them, or they didn't, so...
Yeah.
So I've been keeping track when they come in, I don't know what else to do, you know, so... So we got three sets out there, gonna be four sets coming generally, so...
Yeah.
Different army.
Probably can sell these. Sell on Craigslist, one hundred, real good.
You know, you gotta find out in time, that's a good time, we do.
Barely used, barely owned.
Yeah.
Real good deal.
Well, you never know.
Did Dixon give you a bid date yet, or no?
No, he's, yeah, well, he said he's gonna have everything for January's meeting for us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So he'll have a bid by then?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, whoever all together, he said, of course.
Okay, just a big pa, bid package, or like an actual?
What's that?
Just a bid package?
Yeah, bid package, yeah.
So now like it actually isn't gonna be bid at all?
No, I, he was supposed to, I think he's gonna bid at the middle of...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, he's gonna have all the bids, yeah.
Oh, okay, so he'll have, pretty much, cheap as cash?
Yeah, sure, cheap as cash.
Yep.
And it was decided we were just going with Ugly on the water tower?
I, I'm fine with that, I mean, I don't wanna spend a fortune on something. I mean, I know a lot of people like to see a lot of things on there, but I mean...
I, I just don't...
From a cost standpoint.
I thought we were changing it to ribbon, though.
To change...
Unless we can get, you know, get somebody to sponsor it, and then we'll paint your name up.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's what we're sticking with, exactly. We told him the bid was great, with what they see, so... Alright, guess that's all I, questions I had. Nothing else? Okay. Uh, budget and finance stuff, uh, in January, so we'll, we'll start working on our budget stuff. I know Dave's got some stuff already put together for us. We'll come up with, uh, what projects he need to do next year, obviously, the water tower will be one, and we'll actually have that number, so if we go forward with it, we can plug that number right in, and we don't have to guess what it'll be, so, that'll be nice.
Oh, on that budget, um, the, oh shoot, what's it called? Where they wanted us to change and comply with the, um...
Amendment, you mean?
Intensity bond.
No, it was with the state that we needed to do our, um...
Oh, reporting?
What's that?
The reporting?
Yeah, well, yeah, you know, because, and we were gonna go with the, uh, oh, what company was it? BSNA, you know, for...
Oh, the software, software, yeah, yeah.
But, I got an email from the state, it's been pushed back till probably the end of two thousand and nineteen, and now they're making changes already in it, so there's like, hold off, don't change your stuff now. Thank goodness we have it yet.
Yeah.
You know, because they're still working around bugs and things like that, so I'm just kind of waiting, but I think probably what I'll end up doing is just going and sitting down with Lori Blessing and having her show me on footbooks how to change it.
Yeah.
And when she shows me how to do it, then I can go in and change to the correct codes that need to be put in and stuff like that. But, you know, so I'm kinda glad I didn't, you know, jump in and try to get it done beforehand, and, 'cause then you have to go back and do it all over again. So, but I don't, you know, I think that BSNA can be put on hold for a while then.
Okay, till they get it figured out?
Yep.
Alright, unfinished business, I didn't have any new business, uh, we'll start with our twenty nineteen meeting schedule. There, I threw that together. Basically, it's every Thursday night, first Thursday, uh, set that meeting in February twenty-eighth as a budget hearing, so that's when we'll adopt our new budget, 'cause we need it for March first. So, basically, January third through, and February seventh meetings, we'll be working on budget stuff, get it put together, we'll have a final meeting on the twenty-eighth to approve it. Um, everything else is all Marchers. Now, anybody got any input on that July meeting? The fourth is, July fourth is the first Thursday, so... I don't know from a, is that, that's a Monday night, that one, um, 'cause then the next week, if I went to the next Thursday, that's homecoming, so, pretty good with the first.
Yeah.
Alright, well, we could change it, but I, we'll, we could stick with that, I think that'll, that'll work. And the rest of them are all Thursday, and the seven-thirty is fine with everybody, helps work schedules out? Okay.
And especially with the, well, yeah, but you guys for work, you're for driving, you know, and especially...
Yeah, I know, she's, you know, so, that I, I'd rather have it, unless you're gonna spend four hours at this, I know, but... Alright then, well, I guess if everybody likes that, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty nineteen publicly village council meeting schedule.
I'll make that motion, I'm certain.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Gabe to approve our twenty nineteen village of Ugly council, regular council meeting schedule. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Hey, Barb, put that out on the front for everybody, and...
Okay.
On the website too, right?
Yep.
Okay. All water license agreement, so Carl's agreement he had was good till December first, essentially, November thirtieth. So, at that point, we had the option to go month-to-month with him or with somebody else, while Dave has went out and found somebody else, and Dave likes working with this guy, and I support what Dave, he's doing the work, I'm not gonna tell Dave who to hire. I mean, I, I agree with, if he feels he's getting better training and, and it's saving the village, actually, fifteen bucks an hour or two, so I guess that's even a bonus to it, but, um, I want somebody that wants to make sure stuff's running right and put in the effort to it, so, um, with that being said, I'll kinda read off this agreement I have. So the village of Ugly agrees to hire Rick Peruski, and then we have his license from the DQ, anybody wants to see it? Uh, the village agrees to hire Peruski to manage the water distribution system on a month-to-month basis, starting December twenty-eighteen. The village shall pay Peruski twenty-five dollars an hour for a guaranteed minimum eight hours per month. So at a minimum, he'll get two hundred dollars a month to do this, where before, we were, we were three-twenty. Any additional hours above eight hours are at the discretion of the DPW superintendent and the village president. The duty shall be assigned by the DPW superintendent. Peruski shall be an adwell contractor, shall receive no benefits of any kind, sick pay, vacation, downtime, et cetera. The contract contains an entire agreement between the parties, the terms and conditions here and after may be not modified in any respect whatsoever unless a separate agreement is approved by the village council, signed by all parties. So with that being said, entertain a motion for us to hire a water licensed water operator.
I'll make that motion. Second that motion?
Motion by Gabe, seconded by Brandon, to hire a licensed water operator, licensed by the MDEQ to operate the village water distribution system. All in favor? Sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, okay, thirteen C, twenty nineteen committee assignment, so basically, we got committees, we got Parks, DPW, police, uh, budget, planning and zoning, missing one.
Intergovernmental.
Yeah, intergovernmental, one you were doing. So, guys, I'm not gonna be a hammer, just assign it to you, so, you've been doing police.
Yeah.
You wanna stick with that?
I'm good.
You probably wanna stick with DPW?
I'm good, as long as Dave will keep me.
Okay.
Dave, wow.
We need a backup person for each committee for them, so...
I've been back up.
For which one?
Police and public.
Okay, you need a backup.
I need backup.
Yep, so...
I got Tim.
Alright, so she'll be your backup. So that's our police committee and our DPW. Uh, Parks committee, he was chair on that before, who would like to be, he would, would you like to do that, be on the park? Okay.
That's Sarah?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'm a backup for the park?
Yep. Okay, I got, I'll turn the government website, anything going on at the county you know about? Intergovernmental, website, anything going on at the county you know about, any stuff like that, so who would, who would like to chair that? I have budget and finance stuff left too, so.
So, why do you, you're looking at me? So, Tommy, what do I have to do?
Budget, notice I finance, notice I fill mine up real quick. I got, I got two, I got two left. Budget, finance, and intergovernmental relations, which is basically Jeff would bring us stuff, um, MML has a website. He brings information off there, um, stuff the county's maybe doing that he, he knows, found out about. It's, it's fairly simple, it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah, I, I think you made a good.
I mean, which one of you would be more like budget and finance stuff, which one would be?
I mean, I can help you with budget and finance.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not just gonna say you get it done, but. No, no, no. Okay, so.
I may have to write it with you shopping trips and that, that's maybe, so.
Alright, so you'll do, you'll chair budget and finance, you'll chair the intergovernmental relations. Who wants to be a backup on either one of those committees?
I'll, I'll back up the intergovernmental.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which one do you want that one? You, you, you be good.
We'll go over.
Alright, I guess I can be a backup on that.
Alright.
I'll stay on backup on.
Yep, you already have one.
Who's doing, who's doing intergovernmental?
Sarah's, yep.
Sarah and Jeff. Okay, and then budget is Jennifer and Brandon?
Yep. And the only. So, what we would have left is the planning and zoning, so. We'll put it out, I mean, I've been doing that, so I don't have a problem doing it, I guess, but the new person will, uh, get saddled with that, so. Planning and zoning. That would be all of them.
I got it all done.
You're all set on that?
Yeah. Are you gonna show her, or are you gonna show Jennifer your?
I hope so.
Otherwise, you're all budget like, what?
Oh, yeah.
I have no clue.
I plan on in February, they do a, they do that thing in Frankham booth, and they got a whole thing on budget stuff, and I really wanna do that, cause at that meeting, he talked about a little bit, and there's, there's some things that you can do that's like, oh, we were doing that, and we could do this differently and stuff, so. I mean, you just, it's, it's good to go to some of that stuff, some of that training stuff, because you get people telling you, well, this is how it is, and then you go there and it's like, well, I don't know what's not. So, alright, well, then that, that solves that, um, our item D is our new marijuana ordinance that we're, be our first reading.
Alright. Chapter four, prohibition of marijuana establishments, article four. An ordinance to prohibit marijuana establishments pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, Ballot Pools One of two thousand and eighteen. The Village of Ugly ordains section four dash E. Pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, section six point one. The village elects to prohibit marijuana establishments within its boundaries. Effective date, the ordinance requires it be effective as is necessary to regulate persons and property for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare under the authority and adopted pursuant to Public Act three of nineteen, or eighteen ninety-five, Village Ordance, ordinances, MCL sixty-seven point one. Uh, this ordinance shall become effective the day after its publication as authorized by law. Uh, consistency and repeal, all existing ordinances or, uh, part of ordinances are to be interpreted as consistent with this ordinance and state law. Any ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Nothing in this ordinance shall result in any prohibitions otherwise allowed under the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act as adopted, or the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, initiated law one of two thousand and eight. Geographic area, this ordinance shall have the regulatory effect of prohibited marijuana establishments in all geographic areas of the Village of Ugly to the fullest extent allowed by law.
Okay.
There you go.
So, how many readings do we have to do on that? Two?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, then, once we read it next month, we can publish it, and then it'll be effective.
Yeah.
Yep. I'll keep that right here. Did you get a copy of that yet?
No, I, um.
Okay.
I see, I, I would show you, so.
I have to get a copy, yeah, we'll have to get. But there's already, there's already, let's.
I will, I have to get one, yeah.
We're going, yeah. So, you know, it, that, that isn't gonna be a final law anyway for how long? Cause people are already trying to.
It's gonna be about a year before they plan on rolling anything out according to what MML was talking about anyway, but.
Twelve o'clock tonight, she's a legal beagle, though.
Tonight?
Hmm?
Tonight? So, then people can, they can legally grow it in their homes, then, right?
Can't sell it.
They can't sell it, it's just growing, homegrown, and then walking down the street.
Well, they're gonna try, that's the trying to, to get that out now, that you can't grow it on your own, so. That's the next battle.
Well, judging by what Chief Rothy was talking about, basically, you're growing way more than what you can possess to begin with if you grow with all the plants that they're allowed. So, you're just open the door for a lot of people to break the law, essentially, because then you're gonna possess far more than you're supposed to for anybody who's.
And like, you don't think they're gonna sell it? Yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing, yeah.
That's why they're calling up another thing to ban growing it at your house. They want it completely controlled at your house, so, so it's pretty much gonna be like, big dozens.
It's like closing the door after the horse has gotten out.
You can grow in your house, I mean, people, do you know, have that.
Isn't it kinda like closing the, the door after the horse has gotten out?
Well, that's what they did, they put the, they put the cart for the horse, now they're making a ball of these laws, there's, there's a sunset, all that ten percent taxes that we're gonna be able to make off of. Yeah, that ends at the end of the year, that's eighteen, and there's no more ten percent on it. They put a sunset clause on the tax, so it's, and then when they allow people growing at their house, so they're doing, they're, they're business cash grabbers. What it's gonna do?
Go ahead.
Alright, I got one more memo, this is from Chief Rothy, this is dated today. Uh, memo, uh, two oh one eight dash one. On December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act takes effect, making the recreational use of marijuana by persons age twenty-one and older legal in Micho- Michigan. Uh, although legal for members of the general public, members of the Ugly Police Department will be prohibited from using recreational marijuana on or off duty. UPD members will also continue to be prohibited from possession, manufacturing, distributing, or dispensing marijuana. I think my bifocals aren't. Except in the course of their duties as authorized by department policy. UPD Rules and Regulations, Code of Conduct, the Federal Controls of Substances Act, and the Federal Drug-Free Workplace Act of nineteen eighty-eight, together prohibit the use, possession, or cultivation of controlled substances by all department employees. Enforcement members are further prohibited from using marijuana by the Federal Gun Control Act, which prohibits an individual who uses marijuana from possessing a firearm or ammunition. Uh, UPD members who violate department policy or law related to marijuana are subject to discipline up to and including discharge. Each department member is required to sign and date the bottom of the page and return to me if you have any questions, blah, blah, blah.
Which the villagers, I mean, already doing that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, so we're good on that. Okay. Uh, public comment.
Gotta speak up, huh?
There you go.
I'd just like to thank all the council for, uh, your service to our community, especially, uh, new members that have come along. Congratulations, Sarah, and, uh, Jeff, thanks for coming back on board, Jennifer, Larry, and Barb to, uh, keeping it all together, so, thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas to you, thank you.
Oh, the only thing I had public comment last month, Jeff Maurer, uh, concerns about the trucks, and Brandon talked to Gemini's dispatching unit about it, and I I haven't seen no tracks in his yard, so.
I went by there twice, no tracks.
I haven't seen any black marks on the opening either, so, so far, I seen him at border verse here two weeks ago, and he said he hadn't had any, so.
So, other than that, that's all I have. Guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll make a motion in the early meeting. All in favor?